Welcome back to Speaking Truth to Goodness. I'm one of your hosts, Patty Robron, and with me is Jerry Atkins, my co-host and co-conspirator in this subversive podcast. Today, we're excited to introduce Jeremy Bosley Smith, a candidate for District Four who's deeply involved in shaping the future of downtown Portland. As a resident, husband, parent, and project manager at Portland State University, Jeremy brings a unique blend of personal and professional insights to his campaign. Jeremy is fervently dedicated to improving mental health services, advocating for renters' rights, and pushing for sustainable infrastructure in Portland. His approach is grounded in addressing the root causes of inequality to move Portland toward a safer, healthier, and more equitable future. In this episode, we'll talk about how Jeremy's personal experiences, including his journey with bipolar disorder and his recent family changes, fuel his activism and policy priorities. Join us as we explore the intersections of personal challenges in public service and how Jeremy's socialist values influence his vision for Portland. Here it is. Well, hi, Jeremy.
Hello.
Thank you so much for being part of this podcast series.
Absolutely. Glad to be here.
Yeah. I'm wondering if we can start with a little bit about your background and how that led you to this moment when you're running for city council in Portland?
Yeah, absolutely. I feel like I can trace my first moment of really thinking about democracy and what it means to be an elected official. To third grade, I was eight years old. I had just gotten off of seeing Revenge of the Sith, the Star Wars movie, with my dad. And my third-grade teacher was talking, we were learning about the Roman Republic. And she was putting it, you know, you have the Republic in Star Wars, you have the Empire, you have all these factions and the rebels. And I started getting really, I tuned in, you know, because I was like, oh, Star Wars, that's, that's pretty interesting. And started learning about the Roman Republic and elected officials and what it means to be a servant leader, what it means to represent others and be a voice for folks, you know, because not everyone necessarily can be in that position. Everyone's got their, their job and the things that they need to do. So I thought that was a really interesting prospect. And it kind of stuck in my head and was always kind of drawn to leadership positions. And throughout elementary, middle, and high school, I was pretty much always in some leadership position in high school, like student body president. And then at Virginia Tech, I was also the student body president there where I went to college and just had a real fascination with politics and getting, you know, getting good folks elected.
So you're not actually a stranger to running for office?
No, not at all. I've done it a number of times on smaller scales. And so, but even, even Virginia Tech, I mean, it had, it has over 30,000 undergraduate students, which is, you know, full-time residents in Blacksburg, the town that Virginia Tech is in. It's only about 10,000. So it was representing a lot of people. And it was quite, quite the job even then.
So what's impressive to me is that you remember third grade. I have trouble doing that. But so you've been dealing with negotiating, balancing perspectives, getting people to work together from childhood. That's an important skill. So you can come with the best ideas in the world into a setting and not know how to maneuver in the circumstance and not be very effective. Back, back, very far back, back in the 60s, we used to say, having correct line and 50 cents will get you a cup of coffee. So knowing what you're talking about, knowing what you think needs to happen, and actually making it happen are two completely different things.
Yeah. I very much crowdsourced my ideas. I really like talking to people. And I'm not necessarily sold on any one thing. I have ideas that I think would be helpful. But at the end of the day, I ultimately just want to do what people want. And so I think that's what your job is as an elected official. It's not really to, again, it's servant leadership, you know? You're, you're serving the people that elected you. And if you're not, your job is to be a good listener and not necessarily rule with this iron fist of like, I, I have all of the answers and I, I'm the person that can fix all of this. I, I just don't really buy into that. I don't think there's any one person. But the collective mindset, there's a lot of good ideas out there.
How, how is it that this insight, some, many elected officials did not get the memo?
I think that it boils down to, you know, who gets attracted to these positions and who it's accessible for? Because it generally is not accessible for the working class. It's very difficult to juggle if you, you know, just your job and, and all of your, your errands and your responsibilities to your family. And if you are overworked, underpaid, the last thing that you have energy for is to tune in to what is happening, happening politically.
I agree with you. That's a huge problem in a ostensibly people-led democracy situation.
Yeah, for sure.
Now, I know from the notes that you identify as a socialist. And I feel like the things you were just talking about are very interlaced with that. If you think so too, can you share maybe about that journey of calling yourself a socialist and how that additionally informs what you're doing?
Yeah, absolutely. I grew up in Virginia Beach in the backyard of Northwick Naval Station, which is the largest Navy base in the world. And I was fed so much American exceptionalism, patriotism. And also just as I got older, you know, realizing, I was like, told so often that to be a good American, you go and you serve your country. And, and the propaganda just goes so deep in Virginia Beach and in the schools as well. So when I got to college, I, I joined the Navy ROTC and I did that. And I, you know, my roommates, I just, I couldn't, I couldn't see eye to eye with a lot of the people that were in the Corps of Cadets and Navy ROTC because I had just come back from my first opportunity of going out of the country. I had gotten to go to England and Denmark. And when I was in Copenhagen, I, I didn't see many houseless people. I saw very equitable society. Most everyone seemed fairly happy. I know Denmark, you know, nowhere is a utopia. There's no necessarily perfect society. But it kind of was striking me as having the, uh, the freedom that I had been told that we had in the United States. But I didn't necessarily, it didn't jive with me because I still saw houseless people in Virginia Beach. I still, there was so much that wasn't making sense to me and it wasn't equitable. And so I had just come back from that trip and kind of got turned on that. I was like, what is their governmental system in Denmark? And it's democratic socialism, I came to find out. And I was like, do we have that here? And so I like started like researching it and I find this old senator from Vermont that a lot of us knows, Bernie Sanders. And I was like reading through his stuff and I was really skeptical because I had been raised, you know, conservative, Republican. And I started looking at his platform and was like, oh, wait, I actually, I actually agree with a lot of this. And so I just went down that rabbit hole and just learned more and more about like what socialism actually is, that there is precedence for it in the United States and that the, the federal government and state, pretty much every level of government has tried very hard to push down socialism in this country in a working-class movement. And that to me tells you everything that you need to know is that
Fuck, yes, it does.
How hard the business interests in this country and oligarchs and the, the truly uber-rich try to just stem these movements. And you're like, why do you, you have to scratch your head and think like, why do you care so much? Like, why? Because, you know, you're benefiting from this system right now.
Before you got here, and Patty's setting up, we already had our tantrum about capitalism and healthcare. Because, you know, it's not just an idea. It's, it's, there are people who theoretically think capitalism is a problem and they're populism, populism, people whose lives are ground down to nothing by these forces. So if you're going to be an anti-capitalist, it better be in your gut. Up here is not nearly enough. So, so there's, we have a little pool of rage over here that we occasionally tap into. How much do you want today, Patty? Here, here's, here's a portion of rage. And, and you see, it's like we're told, America's the best place. We are so lucky to be oppressed like this. Wait, man, that's not true. What did I miss? For me, I lived in Africa for three years, so that sort of turned my life, turned my life around. But I love the fact that you actually understand how the system works and who it works for.
Yeah.
And that you've had this experience of then trying to put it in different political contexts and find constructive consensus to work with. Again, it just seems like these are extraordinarily important things to bring to a moment in Portland's history, which has never existed before and will never exist again. And probably get into talking about that later, that this is a true opportunity to completely change the nature of politics in Portland. I've been, over the course of these interviews, increasingly excited about this historical moment and what's actually possible. There has never been a moment like this. There will never be another moment like this. So this is really important stuff.
Well, the charter reform was a huge catalyst for me jumping in this time around because I am very new to Portland and I definitely think that I have a lot to learn. But the best way to have gotten educated on all of the groups here in the systems has been jumping into the race and just meeting all these folks and, and a lot of older folks that have been fighting the good fight for a long time and are trying to like coach me up. And they're like, hey, I want you to know about this history of Portland. And like, there's a lot of energy for change and people see me and they're like, ah, new person. Like this guy. And I bring to the table that I am not jaded by the way that things have been in Portland. I bring enthusiasm. I bring curiosity and a genuine willingness to learn and not just act like I'm coming to the table with all of the answers right now. And I think we need more people in government that have that curious mindset and are wanting to learn more from the people that they actually represent.
So the word that's coming to mind is subversive.
Subversive?
He's very subversive.
This all seems very above board to me. I don't know.
He's going to subvert the toxic swamp.
All right, all right.
Subversion is not a bad thing. It depends on what you're subverting.
It's true.
Okay, I can take that.
But that's, that's the sense of that these ideas, which are so simple and so self-evident, are completely absent from the political conversation.
Now, I'm guessing that you are linked in with some like organizations within Portland. And you mentioned that you've gotten some really good information about Portland's history and things from various people you've connected with. And so I'm kind of curious to know what organizations, groups, and even mentors that you are finding yourself in alignment with as you move through this process?
Absolutely. So I think the big one, and this is kind of where I wanted to begin, was, was the Portland Democratic Socialist chapter, which is truly so extensive and has so many facets to it. And I was involved in Democratic Socialists back in college. And we had one in like Southwest Virginia chapter, but it is not at the level of what Portland Democratic Socialist is. And there are over 1,000 members. And that's not even the peak. I think the pandemic really, it made the, definitely there was a dip in, in membership. But with this election and, and the charter reform, there's a lot of new energy in it. So just meeting people in that organization has been great. Sunrise Movement, I never really had a chance to get involved with them back in college. So it's cool to get more involved with them. And I, I love that there's a lot of high schoolers in that organization. There's some people who are 14, 15, and they are, they're in it. They, they know what's going on and they are very informed on especially the local environmental stuff. And I'm, I've been very impressed. And even just being aware of 350 PDx, Extinction Rebellion, like all of these organizations, everything, kind of what's going on over at Green Anchors and over there by Cathedral Park is, that was all new to me. And that's been interesting in also just learning about the unions too. In Virginia, it's a right-to-work state. The labor movement has been beaten down for well over a century. There's been so much union busting and, and unions, it's not really, it's not really a culture in Virginia, you know? There's, I mean, I gotta imagine some, but out here to have so many active unions has been a huge thing. And I've learned so much from this, this first go-around. But District Four and District Three are up for reelection again in two years. And I think, you know, I've learned so many lessons already. And if like I had a fresh start, it would be to like really, you know, get more educated on the unions and what, what's out there. It's kind of like, by the time I jumped in at the end of February, it already felt like I was behind, you know?
Sure, yeah.
Because there's a lot of unions that had already endorsed three candidates.
You're talking about DSA. So Jamie Partridge.
Yeah.
He's been a friend for about 25 years.
Yeah.
I once accused him of elder abuse because he had his parents phone banking.
Jerry.
It's like, yeah. So Jamie is an extraordinary, has an extraordinary ability and energy, which he is older now, as am I. But he's been through, he's been through, he's a great mentor because he's tried to link labor into the, into the larger social movements. First, I've only known him for 25 years. So for at least 25 years, more like 30. And he's indefatigable. I mean, that's a long, too many syllables in that word. But it just, he just keeps going on and on and on. He's extraordinary. And we worked jobs with Justice together for a number of years. He's very special.
Yeah. It does feel a little bit, Portland Democratic Socialist sometimes feels like the Jamie Partridge Show a little bit, but it's good to have him and I look forward to getting to know him a lot better. My, uh, my wife actually just unionized her workplace over at Unity Behavioral Health, the behavioral health therapist. They just unionized about 60 of them. So.
Who did they organize with?
They went with ONA. So the, the nurses.
That's a sector that the Wobblies were organizing 25 years ago, the IWW.
Okay.
Really. You know what a Wobbly is?
Nope. No, I grew up in kind of a, like, we're against unions because that's how people take advantage of things kind of mentality. Maybe you did too, growing up conservative.
Yeah. Well, it's like, the union's going to tell you what to do and, you know, you, you want your individuality. You want your freedom, you know? You don't want these people telling you what to do. And it's like, well, there's people telling you what to do anyways. And you have no control over your life. So if you have a union, you might actually be able to have a little agency
So interesting.
in how you're, how you're treated at work.
It's amazing to recognize that when you talk about union busting. I mean, it isn't just the workplace shenanigans that's, you know, banned in other countries and we still do here. It's like a psychological game being played on all of us too.
The propaganda goes deep. I really feel like the United States does propaganda better than any other country.
We are good at that.
Yeah. And like getting people to vote against their own best interests and do things that really are not helping them at all. But it goes deep in that, that's, you know, that's generational trauma of like, it's being passed down. And when we talk about being beat down, like I'm talking about physically hurt by either police, union busting forces, like this is not.
You just said the magic word, trauma. Patty believes in trauma, only because it's real and has an effect. I don't know.
Oh, yeah. Shapes so much more than I think we give it credit for.
So let me, let me just, as my random mind works, we're also just talking about, there's a phrase, I worked with workers, client closures for my, my work life. But there's this idea of meritocracy, which dovetails nicely with American individualism. And it's like, if you work hard enough, you can be anybody. You can do anything you want. This is a free country. There are no class barriers, bull fucking shit. Sorry.
We're allowed to swear on this podcast. It's fine.
So the, you know, and in some ways it sounds merit. But like I told Patty, anything that ends with ruled by.
Ocresy.
You have to look at. But it's not ruled by merit. It's ruled by fucking privilege. It's ruled by privilege. Then merit enters in at some point, but that's not. And it's, it's again, one of those screens that make people realize, well, I haven't been successful in the way I hope to, but it's my fault. And believe me, it's not. And so one of the things that we carried with was this message that, no, 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 that's not.
Yeah. I think there's a lot of folks that think that they're disenfranchised millionaires and they're just one big break away from, you know, hitting it big. And I really, I, 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 a lot of these folks are like living paycheck to paycheck. And like, my friend, you, you are one paycheck away from being houseless. Like you are not about to become, you're not going to be Elon Musk. You're not going to be Jeff Bezos. And if you look at those folks, they all, it's exactly what Jerry was just saying about privilege, you know? Bill Gates, mom worked at IBM.
Yeah.
Like, I, the, the starting point is completely different. And so much of your success in life is extremely dependent on what zip code you were born into. It's, it's your parents. It's, you know, it's not meritocracy.
Having this depth of conversation in a political context is subversive. That's my word for today, subversive.
I like it. So we talked about DSA and your connection to them and how important that's been. I'm curious if the majority of your connections you find coming through that organization? Or if there's other mentors and, and groups that you wanted to kind of shout out and note your connection to?
Yeah. Gray Panthers as well. Lou Church. He, it's, so it's focused on elderly issues, but also issues that revolve around gun reform, issues that, it's really just like most civil rights. So I have really forged a friendship with Lou Church over there who is awesome. And it's great to have that intergenerational solidarity.
Oh, I know something about that, Jerry.
Of like, it's not just old people bad, you know? Because I think that there's a lot, there's a lot of sentiment in generation, in Gen Z that it's like, oh, we can't, you know, the baby boomers, they, they hate us. They blame everything on us. And it started with the millennials, like they're ruining everything. And then it's been Gen Z that we're all lazy and we don't want to work. And, you know, we are all just the quote unquote, snowflakes and like demeaning us, like.
Well, again, in a sense, it's just another example of how we're pitted against each other. And that's the basis of maintaining power with a small group of people, entitled people, is to make the other groups, or it's a limited resource. If you get something, they can't have anything. So take care of your own interest. So Gray Panthers is a great source. So what other folks have you found to be a source of inspiration and hope?
Uh, they're, I, I'm sure they would rather remain unnamed, but I've had some folks come to me about the neighborhood associations and getting me educated on some of the things that, you know, the good, the bad, and the ugly on it. And there is the Southwest Neighborhoods Incorporated, which I don't know if y'all know much about that. But with these new districts, there is all of this reorganizing of, of the neighborhood associations and that, you know, they get taxpayer money and it's, they're kind of opaque a little bit. As someone, you know, a transplant and trying to get involved in local government. And that's sort of, sort of your like most basic level of entrance into having some agency over your life. And it was a little difficult to like get into the Zoom meetings. Like there was one time that someone was sick and then the Zoom meeting just got canceled. And I was like, why is there only one person that is in charge of running this meeting? Like surely there should be one other person at least that could, you know, in that person's absence, do this. And the, it's now the District Four Coalition. And, you know, that's representing like 150,000 people. So we need to make sure that those things are, are open to the public. Although there isn't a, a meeting in the neighborhood association that shouldn't be recorded and accessible through, if it's YouTube or some platform that people can reference later. Like none of these conversations should be done in darkness. And with the way the technology is now, there's really no reason for these like behind closed doors meetings, especially when what your neighborhood association is doing really affects your life. And, and as a renter especially, it's really hard to even know what neighborhood association you're represented by or.
You see, it's, we started talking about this last time, I think, maybe the time before. Neighborhood associations are key. They're, they tend to run the gamut from have a clue to have no clue or have a clue and it's their clue and they want to maintain their clue, i.e. control, especially property owners who feel like the neighborhood association should be there to protect them.
Yeah.
That's going to be a struggle that has to be, the community organizing necessity that this brings to the fore is enormous. So there's a lot, I think, of responsibility on people who actually understand how these things work to help in the re-education process and to not let people be pushed out. You have a right. This is your neighborhood association. Don't let tell anyone. Don't let anyone tell you.
And also being forward-facing, like having that outreach of like, I, I just don't, I think that there could be more done to kind of like get it in your face of like, hey, this exists. These are the services that it offers. One thing that's been cool that I learned about is the neighborhood emergency teams. And that actually Andrea kind of got me a little educated on that. And, you know, no matter what happens with this election, I've learned so many opportunities to get more involved in Portland. And I would definitely like to be on my neighborhood emergency team in Lared Hill. I think that would be something that I'd get a lot out of and could offer a lot too.
Hey, I'm getting the sense that you're feeling like kind of a late entry to this, to this process. I see like this is, this is a seed that you are cult, like planting and starting to cultivate now.
Yeah.
So how do you see like win or lose? What do you see as your main focus of what you want to make better for the people of Portland and District Four?
Definitely. So one of the projects I get to work on right now at Portland State is the ITech Center. So this is the Indigenous Traditional Ecological and Cultural Knowledge Center. And so this is for the Indigenous Studies Program. There's going to be a lot of crossover with Biology and, and the Architecture Program. And it's, we're trying to kind of change the way the capital projects are done, you know, at least at Portland State. And Portland State is the largest landowner in downtown Portland. We have 50 some odd buildings, right? And so we're trying to go after right now a Living Building Challenge, which is a really cool opportunity to create net zero buildings and off the grid. So we're kind of, it's very early development stages, but.
How does that compare to like a LEED certification?
I think LEED has gotten better, but in, I feel like LEED is really focused on, there's a lot of box checking. And I feel like Living Building Challenge is a little bit more comprehensive in the sense that it goes a lot farther than LEED. I think LEED is a lot in the processes of constructing it. And then the Living Building is, you know, once this building is completed, that it will be not only net zero, but even contributing in a net positive way to the environment, whether that's socially accessibility-wise, you know, the actual production of the energy. LEED doesn't quite go as far with, with the net zero. I think that they've added a lot to it even since I was in college. But there's, there's red lists in the Living Building Challenge. And these are like, as we get farther along, you know, we, pretty much all of our buildings have asbestos in them, like hazardous materials. And so that, that's the big rush now is to get all the asbestos-containing material out of our buildings. And like, we, as we develop better technologies, get, have better research about what is making us sick. Like a lot of our buildings are making us ill. And so we, the red list in Living Building Challenge, these are things that are harmful to our health. These are things that are harmful to the environment. So it, it's really a lot more comprehensive. And even LEED is very like building-centric only, in, in my opinion. But Living Building Challenge incorporates a lot more of that like social aspect of like, does this building bring us joy? Does this building bring community together? There's, it's a lot more than LEED.
So it's almost as if it's like intersectionality.
Oh, yeah, how so?
All these, all these things are connected. All these things are connected. So you can't just go. So you can't just go in and make a building net zero and think you've won something. It's definitely a good step. But it has, in my, from my perspective, part of a larger understanding of climate and what's actually happening and how projects like this need to be linked. And the vision that you described for living building, whatever it was.
Yeah.
Is expansive as opposed to contained.
Yeah.
So that it can spread out and sort of connect and be part of, I think what you're saying is in this campaign, you've met a lot of interesting people and you won't un have met them if you don't get elected, right?
Yeah.
So now you have a network.
Yeah.
That helps educate you on the one hand, but allows you to collaborate in ways that weren't possible. And I think Andrew's been very clear that this process of collaboration within the campaign is in itself earth shaking.
Yes. And we have to be setting some record at this point. I think there's like ninety some odd candidates in the race. And like, that's, this is what Portland voters wanted. It's more participation in democracy. And even some of the people in the race whose policies I vehemently disagree with, they're interesting people in their own right. And they have done a lot of interesting things to get to this point. Like one doesn't get to the point where they run for Portland City Council without experiencing a couple of things in their life. But to circle back to your original question, Patty, I, I really believe, and the reason I brought up the ITech Center is because I learned from Judy Blue Horse Skelton, who's an awesome resource, uh, professor at Portland State. This mantra of slow change is long change. And so I did feel like, I, I was really up in the air about even jumping in this time around, but it's such a historic and interesting moment. I couldn't stay out of it. Just as like a politics nerd, like I, I was like, I, I feel like I want to be a part of that. And so it's been really interesting to just, you know, and, and meet people like yourselves as well. So I think I've, you know, if I've got to like focus more on like twenty twenty six, you kind of were talking about like planting a seed. Like I want it to be organic. I don't, I don't want anyone to feel like I'm kind of like forcing it because I am new. And I think that you do need to get to know the history of a place a little bit before you might be in a position where you're making huge decisions about how people's lives are going. But I, I take it really seriously. So I like, I think at this point, I, I was, I was hitting it super hard for like three months. I think I got slightly burnt out by it and, and I pulled back a little bit this month. And I, I'm slowly getting back to a balance. And, uh, this is like one of the first things I kind of easy myself back in on. So, uh, yeah, and this has been, this has been perfect. So.
Well, I mean, it's great though, to hear the things you have to say. Like I think what you do bring by your own words is you bring an outsider's perspective and an understanding of how some of this goes in other places. And you think it's really cool what's happening here, right? So that, I think that's huge. And so um, no matter how the election goes, like it's awesome that you're linked in and you're going to get to contribute. But let's say you do get elected, right? How do you see what you're doing for the university right now? How do you see that like clean building, clean building challenge?
The living building challenge.
Building challenge. Do you see that living building challenge or any, uh, aspects of that as something that would really be core to what you wanted to bring to Portland in your time?
Yeah, absolutely. One of the things I'm really passionate about is sustainable infrastructure and, you know, the intersectionality of a lot of these issues is that.
I'll just go in the other room. I don't want to be part of this. I don't have to put all those crap on like I said, it's my house.
But our built environment, I, there's so much, it can positively impact us or it can negatively impact us. And I think something that really struck or stuck out to me is that thirty percent of commercial space in Portland is vacant. And the fact that we are not able to create more short term housing to get people kind of triaged and back up to, you know, adjust meds and help people detox and get people at a point, you know, that they feel like they can do what is healthily sustainable and fulfilling. You know, I, I just disagree that we can't, we, we can definitely do this, you know, we can retrofit buildings. There's a lot that goes into the, the codes and, and regulations of like seismically upgrade. There's a lot more that you have to do for a residential space than you have to do for a commercial space. So, but there's kind of some ways and I've talked to some different people, even a couple of people in the state legislature, which is cool, that kind of had some interest in what I was doing that have shared some of these, like these same ideas. And we have to get creative about it. But also there's some like way less creative ideas that we can be doing. They're in our apartment complexes, they're allowed, there's really no stipulation on what their occupancy rate has to be. And I've been thinking about this a lot lately, that if you're, you own one of these huge apartment complexes downtown and you don't have a ninety percent, ninety five percent occupancy rate, there needs to be some kind of ramification for that. And like whether it's fines or we could talk, we could have a conversation about what that kind of looks like. But you need to be renting those out because what they'll do is they'll keep a, a bunch of them empty. They'll charge whatever rent they think they can get away with. And if it doesn't get rented, it doesn't get rented. So like there, I'd be really interested to see more what the vacancy rates are in a lot of these apartment complexes. Like I, I just disagree that we don't have enough housing right now. And I feel like this conversation always is like so much of the conversation right now that I hear from other candidates is affordable housing, affordable housing, we got to build more. And I'm like, what developer's paying you to say this? Because.
Subversive, subversive.
Yeah, this is the subversive.
Intersectionality, subversive, the two words of the day.
Well, so I mean, I'm thinking about what you're saying. This is something I've never really thought about before. And I'm thinking, well, right. So the city would greenlight buildings for apartments to be built, thinking people will live in those apartments and shop in that area.
Hmm.
And so then all of a sudden sixty percent of what they expected isn't there. And those shops are now in, in peril.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's making some sense. And I don't understand how that pencils like building owners with not apparently having much income coming back from their properties. I don't understand how they can let it sit empty either.
Yeah, I think that there, there's like some level of being able to like write it off, like as a on your taxes. So I definitely want to look more into that. But yeah. I, um, I don't know. And something Andrea and I had spoken about too, is like when we have these housing developments, like getting people the jobs that would be required to take care of these spaces, you know? And like I, we were kind of envisioning this idea of like, it has a cafeteria and it has, you know, it has a nursing station within it where people can get their meds adjusted. And, you know, if there's, there's going to be custodial work that has to be done. We could be bringing in unions and getting people, we need so many people in the trades. We, we are in such a shortage of, of craftspeople. And these are, these are good jobs, you know? It's like, it's great work that is truly contributing to what we need. There's plenty of work to do. We have such a backlog of projects right now at Portland State. So it's definitely, we're not at a loss for work to do by any means.
Or people to do it really. There's kind of a lot of us.
Definitely. And I fully believe that there's people, I, I just reject this notion that like people don't want to work. I think people, they want to be in harmony with other folks. They, they want to contribute. Like, I think that everyone has, you know, varying levels of what they're able to do. But just because, you know, one person might be really good at something and you don't really like to do that thing. And, you know, it all kind of works. And we actually don't all have to be working a hundred percent all of the time.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah.
We all shared the load maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know. It seems like very practical ideas that our systems keep us from
Yeah.
any enacting.
Yeah. And I mean, some of these things, you know, it's great to talk about it in theory, you're kind of in the, in the ten thousand foot level. But what does that look like in execution is kind of, you know, it's a little bit more difficult. And that's where dialogue comes in and collaboration and, you know, actually whittling it down to what, what could we do legislative wise? But in, in this new system, it just, I feel like the city councilors are so much more visionary than they have been in the past. Because we'll have a city administrator now, which is like, that's going to be groundbreaking in and of itself, you know, so.
Can you explain why that would be? Like?
Because right now, from my understanding, the commissioners oversee different service areas in the city, like different bureaus. And so they have to kind of balance being a legislator and administering and overseeing these bureaus. So it's kind of, it's kind of an impossible job. Like I, I think about, you know, some of the people that are in the mayoral race right now. And, um, it is interesting to see that three of the four commissioners, all of them are running again. But except for Ted Wiler, but that three of the four commissioners are running for mayor. So.
Good, keep them out.
They count in the city council.
Did I just say that? I did, didn't I?
I didn't hear a thing.
Sometimes I'm so brilliant, I scare myself.
So did you have anything final words you wanted to say about running the campaign before we jump into who you are?
I think at this point, I've learned a lot. The small donor election program is really impressive that Portland has that. Uh, the nine to one match up to twenty dollars is, is amazing. I've definitely, I think at this point, you know, if you, if anything I say resonates with you, if you want to throw me five bucks, that would be awesome. I would really appreciate that.
Can you share with our listeners where they can go to donate to your campaign?
Absolutely. So you can go to my website, Jeremy, the number four, pdx.com. And my first name is J E R E M Y.
Great. All right. So if people give you five bucks, what does that do?
To fifty dollars for my campaign.
Amazing.
What if they give you fifty bucks?
The first twenty dollars would be matched. So they would, that would be two hundred and thirty dollars then.
First thing, do you take cash?
Yeah, we can do cash.
Talk to me afterwards.
Okay, sounds good.
Meet me after the meeting.
Until we start talking to each other for starters, and then about important things, the limits to what we can hope to accomplish are great.
Yeah.
So the conversation is actually, now I'm thinking of it as yeast. The conversation will help the bread rise.
That's right.
That's a pathetic example, isn't it? But I think it's true. In other words, the basic things, we will not fix what's wrong with the society from the top. We will only heal from
Absolutely.
regular people feeling like their conversation matters. Every time you talk to a person, it makes, it helps wear down that sense of what I think doesn't matter, what I say doesn't matter. Because just your presence and your reaching out begins to break down some of the fundamental issues that underlie everything. So you're not in this, and if you win, you're going to take your chips and go home. You're in this to be in this process in whatever form. And being in this election process obviously is transformative. And I think it's transformative, maybe not for all the candidates, but I think this is a brand new process.
Yeah.
And so I get excited, which the idea of being excited about local politics had not occurred to me until we started doing this, right? Because I've lived in Portland for thirty years and then I lived here in the seventies as well, when it was a terrible system. And because the problems were a smaller scale, you could get away with it. But as problems increased, capacity to deal with them did not.
Yeah.
Because the actual structure can't work. Citywide elections, strong mayor, can't fix what's, what needs to be fixed. Starting with the buildings. And that's, I just want to say that the fact that you actually know how to build something in my mind is a great, a, a great plus because it's not abstract. It's in the concrete that you're pouring. It's in the spaces you're designing.
Yeah.
It's the vision you have of how these spaces can be used, right? Concrete.
Yeah.
We're talking about, because you pour.
But hopefully not concrete, because it's not very sustainable, Jerry.
But concrete is bad.
Well, I don't know.
River silt.
It has its place still in construction for sure.
Yeah, I suppose you can't really get away.
Although mass timber is taking it away, but concrete foundations are still kind of the standard for sure. But there's hempcrete. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of new ideas. But kind of to one of your points, I think that we need people, and my little slogan is all in on Portland. Cause I want people to know I'm here for the long haul. I love this place. I absolutely feel like it has such a good basis, you know, and that's because, you know, not for a lack of trying, that there's been a lot of people pushing for a long time. And I view this city as my home. I feel more like I can be myself here than I ever could be back in Virginia. So I'm happy to be here.
Low bar.
Yeah. There's some very beautiful parts of Virginia and still a lot of people there that I love. I, I feel like the political situation has gone in a direction that I'm not super happy with. But, um, you know, there's a lot of people fighting the good fight there too. So.
I just, that's one of the things that, um, sometimes I acknowledge that I know enough to be discouraged. Why am I not? Because there are so many good people doing such good work against such long odds. And everything we do to connect those struggles and to acknowledge, to speak truth to that goodness, how important it is that that we never, I mean, I seem to not be programmed in any way to ever give up. I mean, it's just like, I see too much goodness around me. So I'm hopeful and the more we talk to each other and not in a superficial way about the Super Bowl or
Yeah.
you know, betting odds or fantasy football or whatever that.
I read the other day that Gen Z is the generation that hates talking about sports the most at work.
I am so glad for that.
I feel like I know just enough about sports to talk about it with the guys at work. And it's not because I enjoy sports. I really don't just have something to talk about.
Right.
It, I mean, and that kind of like plays into, you know, meeting people where they are. You gotta speak to people in a language that they understand. And, you know, I mean, there's no harm in talking about sports. It's just, just sports.
Well, so if you don't watch sports, I'm kind of curious now that we're going to enter into learning more about you as a person. Um, what do you do in the midst of this campaign? And I presume working full time also? What do you do to rest, recharge, relax? I, I am hearing you say you have a family, you have a house, like, tell me what that looks like in your life.
Yeah. So, and this kind of goes into just recently kind of getting overloaded. Like I got handed a bunch more work, you know, just at my, at my full time job. I have a, a pretty new marriage and, and a stepson. We got married back in January of this year. And so that navigating the new family has been huge. And then kind of just tacking on, also buying a house and everything, an older home, some is built in nineteen thirty four. And so there's been a lot to deal with. So I think it's really important to take care of your mental health. It's okay. I had, one of my therapists told me that one of my, my superpowers is my ability to quit things. And that, you know, it sounds terrible. It doesn't sound like a good thing at face value. But I think a lot of people get locked into, they get locked into relationships, jobs, just different obligations. And they, they just feel trapped. And, and I hate that feeling. I, I don't like being trapped in, in any sense of it. And I think it's okay to, to peel back on if something is not healthily sustainable, if it's not fulfilling you, 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 that's okay. And.
Are you supposed to do it all? What's your problem?
I know. And I can, I tend to do that and there's times.
Stop it.
Well, you mentioned being, I think you are saying you're a part of Gen Z.
Yeah, I'm the oldest Gen Z-er.
So you're like just over that line.
Nineteen ninety seven.
Okay. So how, like, do you see a difference then, like a strong difference in mentality coming in with the, the Gen Z folks now? Coming into their, like the fullness of their adult life?
Yeah, definitely. I think we're all stressed out, super anxious and really depressed.
What do you think that means for all of us?
Uh, a lot of us are on prescription medications. Uh, I think that, I think there's some serious disenfranchise and, and being disenchanted with, with our system. I think you even just look at like, and I, you, I know we're shifting into more of the personal, but so much of my life is like politics.
Oh, yeah, it's all mixed, it's fine.
All of my family, they just, they just know that, they get me started on politics. But, uh, I mean, even just looking at the federal election, it's like, these are our choices. Like why, why should I vote? Like, why should I care? And I can't really. And I can't really, I can't really fault people for that, you know, especially young folks or really any generation of like, yeah, what is this current system doing to involve you, to make this country somewhere worth living and getting excited about? And so I think a lot of us are demoralized by inaction on, on the climate crisis. You know, I have a lot of, I, I'm not really big on the electric vehicles. I think that there is so much, I don't think it's the, the solution that folks think it is. I think it encourages more car infrastructure, which has, it's unsustainable. It truly cannot continue the way that it is. I mean, even just driving here is like traffic. And I know in Portland it's just getting worse and building another lane does not work. We have to invest in mass transit. And, and in a big way. So, and, and whatever form that takes, you know, if it's buses, if it's the streetcar, the max, like, hit it from, if it's more pedestrian areas, biking, hit it from every angle. And we'll actually have options. I, I'm big on that. I, I don't like ultimatums for, for myself or others. Like if you have a, a this or that, two op- two options, that, that's an ultimatum. You know, you need at least three for you to actually like have a choice, right? So I think you also have to make it more appealing to take mass transit and, or walk or bike to, to be able to, you know, entice people to do that instead of hopping in, in their car.
What if we had a city government that was actually a resp- responsive?
And reflective of the people's wants and desires? Is that what you're suggesting, Jerry?
Cause it was a good thing. Wouldn't we have done it?
Well, okay, so I'm gonna ask a, a question maybe kind of again. So what do you do to rest in the midst of all of that?
I'm really bad.
Do you rest?
I'm really bad at resting. And I think that kind of played into maybe my burnout a little bit too. Is I, I was not sleeping as much as I should have. I was definitely at a net negative on my sleep schedule. And then it was getting kind of like ramped up. And this kind of goes into the bipolar too. We can kind of talk about that as well. Um, sleep is really important for anyone, but I do not get sleepy. I, uh, I will stay up.
So for the listeners, you have been diagnosed with bipolar disorder. Okay.
And we could talk about that a little bit more. Um, but to take care of myself, I mean, I, I did pull back. There were a lot of events that I, I wanted to plan and I might still be able to, to get to them. But um, I recently had a psychiatrist appointment, cause I was kind of struggling a little bit. Cause I, I went up on, I take a pill called Serquel that helps me go to sleep. And I upped my dose with my, you know, working with my psychiatrist. And then it did help me go to sleep, but then I had depressive symptoms. And I just was having a lot of trouble getting out of bed and like getting to work on time and, you know, just keeping up with my, my family obligations and everything. And so I've kind of like slowly been coming back out of that and like leveling off. Um, so I don't know. I, I played a lot of video games. I read my book. A lot of just hanging out and being with my family, like being with my partner. And she brings me a lot of peace in this world. And um, she, you know, works in the mental health field. So she definitely gets it and gives me a lot of grace and care and love.
So you say you have kids?
Just, uh, so Megan, my, my spouse, they had a child when they were sixteen. And so we have a ten year old. Ten year old stepson. So we're kind of getting to like grow up with him. Like he is my stepson, but I also, he's just like my little friend. He like, he tells me I'm his best friend like all the time. And I'm just like, that is, like, that's cool to hear that from a ten year old that I'm not related to. You know, but like, in that way, like I just see him, he definitely views me as like a, a father figure. And like, he's, you know, he's one of my best friends in this world, so.
Creating with love and respect.
Yeah, and he's, he's a person. And like, I, I respect him for being an individual, but he like very much like, he likes spending time with us still. And uh, I think that, you know, it's not necessarily the most ideal situation to have a child that young, but it opens up, I, I'm very much someone that, I'm, I see challenges, but I, I'm just like, that's an opportunity, you know? And I had never thought about dating someone that had a child, or, you know, especially marrying someone that had a child. And it's been very rewarding in ways that I, I didn't expect. It's also challenging. It's not like, it's not easy at all, you know, to balance all of this and also have someone that, you know, you're responsible for.
Cause you are how old?
I'm twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Okay, yeah.
One of the things that I think is important about you now dealing with the reality of having that responsibility, having a child, having that, that love, but, but that responsibility is that's most people's lives. So you now understand something about other people's lives that you actually can't understand abstractly. I mean, you can, here's one of the problems that I find with all the college students who unions now use to organize. They're organizing workers with families and they do not understand what that means. Therefore, I think generically, not because there's anything, in fact, amazing, but people don't trust that they understand. So it's really, it's better to organize, and that's the way it used to be done in unions, with people who'd come up through the union, with families, with responsibilities. So I think everything that gives you a new insight into people's lives, makes you a better candidate, makes you a better person. Um, and lets you have way more fun. I mean, the ten year old, Patty's daughters are, soon to be thirteen and just turned fifteen. I hang out with them from time to time. It's so fucking cool. I am, it would be even more dull and boring if it weren't for them. Cause they just open up the world to you. And also the pure energy of life in a healthy child, a child that's loved and cared for, is like a battery that you could run off of.
And it's, it's kind of like a, it's a call to action as well of just, you have this person. And, and I want, I have all these lofty goals for society and what I would like, I would like for it. But even in this process, like he has told me, he's like, I, I don't like politics. Like he hears, like, his mom and I talk about it. He's like, I think I hate politics. And that was kind of like another signal to me that I needed to pull back a little bit and slow down. Because he is still, he's ten. And like, we were talking to him, we were educating him on what's happening in Palestine and, and Congo, in the Congo. And like, these are big things for a ten year old to be like, taking on and even just what's going on in this country. And so I think that he got a little overloaded on it. And I think it's important to not hide those things or, or shelter him. But I think that it's important to do it in moderation and also in a way that is still respectful of his childhood and not making him grow up too quickly. Cause I think that, but the world at this point, it kind of feels like, it does make you grow up a little quick, but maybe it was always that way.
Well, I mean, it's, again, I think in the United States, you don't have to grow up quickly if you belong to a certain class.
That's fair.
You have certain levels of privilege. I got called, did you call me out on it? I think maybe it was you, cause you call me out all the time. I, I, I said politics was better when I was growing up. People talked to each other. And then it was you or someone else said, if you were white. I thought shit. I mean, I'm so cool. And I never thought that, a huge, there's so many disenfranchised communities. So we just tend to look at what we can see and not the invisible suffering, the invisible um, disenfranchising of people. And then we have to care about it. So that's, I think that's a problem, is you only have more things to care about the more you know. So there's a little bit of overload possible, you said, from experience. But I'll tell you, at eighty-three, I do not care any less about people being oppressed than I did when I was twenty-three.
Yeah, I feel like I heard that a lot when I was younger, like, oh, you'll, you'll be more conservative when you, you know, once you're paying taxes and you have a job. And I'm like, no, honestly, I'm more radicalized than ever. Like I'm seeing it firsthand now, all the things that I heard about. But now I, I'm like in the midst of it. And I, I see it on a daily basis.
Well, why do people do that? Why, why did they pull back and become more conservative? It's because as they grew up, they were taught to be more and more afraid. And so therefore they had to pull back so they could protect what they had. And I, I see that you're seeing it differently, that we're not gonna get there by everyone protecting themselves. We're gonna get there by working together.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that there is kind of a mentality of like, I got mine, and so the system worked for me. And I'm an incredibly privileged person. And I've been able to travel a lot of places. And I have very awesome parents that have afforded me a lot of opportunities and kept me, you know, through my whole manic episode. And, and afterwards, like really providing support through that. But not everyone has that. And that's why, another reason I'm in this race and gravitated towards politics is like, I want people to have what I've had. I truly believe that anyone given the resources, care, energy that I've been given would be in my exact same spot. So, why don't we give it to them? And like, we have enough. We have, we live in a, a country and world of, of surplus. And that, like, we have built so many structures at this point. Like, it's just artificial scarcity. It's keeping it with, keep, keeping homes from folks because they don't have some green paper in their pocket or some numbers in their checking account. It's like, let's get, I don't know, get a grip on it. Like, have some perspective. These things were not always the way that they've become. You know, this is very recent history.
So it, it harkens back to something, something that you were saying is, we have to be sustainable. We have to be, we have to be here for the long haul. It's easy to burn out. It's easy to get discouraged. It's easy to get crushed by the forces that you're pitted against. So we, I think the more we collectivize, the more we share our thoughts and feelings with the people around us. I've, my, one of the things that I've certainly learned over all these years is that friendship sustains you. And it's worth putting energy into. And we usually don't have time to put energy into it. And that comes to our detriment. So I think one of the things about the way we organize work around capitalism is, and because the depression had a big part in it, we don't have the ethnic communities. We don't have the working class communities. We don't have intergenerational families living either together. And so we've lost something. So we need to rebuild something to replace it. And how we treat people is the building block of that.
I think being very serious and intentional about what your definition of a family is as well. Because I think you can choose your family. I mean, I, you know, was born into a family. But like, I chose my spouse and my stepson, like they're my people, they're my support system. And I mean, all of my friends that I've made out here, I, it's good to have people that you can lean on, for sure. And I feel like loneliness is probably the worst feeling that there is in the world. And when I see some people that have, you know, maybe some, some of these like alt-right, even kind of more into like the neo-Nazi kind of views, I just like see extremely hurt and lonely people that are like looking for some sense of camaraderie. And they're finding it in these like super toxic circles. And I feel really a little bit bad for them, I guess, in a sense. Because there are just so many levels of like your life. There's a lot of trauma there. And like, you know, I do believe in reconciliation and, and there's no lost causes. So I think there's something, there's something there. I think there's also, it takes a lot of energy to like kind of unpack that trauma. And there's people in this world that have that energy. I think it's really incumbent on white guys to be talking to other white guys about their views and like kind of checking them, you know? I think sometimes this onus of like education can kind of fall on, on people of color. And I feel like, I feel some duty when I see someone, like another white guy, a spouse seeing like pretty, pretty racist stuff. Because there was a time that like, people got on me about what I was saying. And I used to, you know, spout off on social media. And I, I didn't even, I didn't know what I was talking about. And like, when you're so, like, you're, you're fed this propaganda from such a young age, it's really hard to break through that. Especially without having the privilege of going to college, having the privilege of traveling, like back to my story of going to Denmark. It's like,
Great point.
I mean, I, that was a world reckoning moment, even getting to go to England. I was like, oh wait, wow, we're like, there's like other countries, like doing, doing pretty much the same stuff we're doing, sometimes in some ways better. So I, you, you gain that perspective. And for a long time, I kind of like, did not like living in the United States. And I, I wanted to leave, like after I had seen some other parts of the world. But because of the pandemic, I really had to explore my own country. And I kind of, I fell back in love with it of just, you know, the national parks a- and just in the land, you know? Getting in touch with that and just fixating a lot on moving out west. And being out here, you were asking about unwinding, like hikes for sure, a huge thing for me. Um, done a lot of good ones up at Mount Hood, up the beach, you know, out around Bend. I, and I also do really like to camp. I think being in touch with nature is really important. Getting off of, I, I honestly hate my smartphone. I really do. I like hate how much of my life revolves around it and how often I look at it. And that, you know, it gives you that little dopamine rush every time you, you pick it up. And it really is, it's addicting. It's a different drug.
The, the operative syllable is the first one dope. You're dope. Dope, dope and dope, they're closely related. So Patty and I have an ongoing conversation about the contribution of technology and the dangers of it. And I'm struck by the statistics around loneliness and people who live their life a lot on social media. So the, a balance is a tool, like it's everything else. It's like AI. Is, is it dangerous? Hell yes. Is it potentially world changing? Hell yes. And we don't have responsible structures to take the responsibility of figuring it out. Not from the position of how much profits can be generated by AI or how much social control. So if I were any generation looking at my own, I would be disgusted. I would not be happy with me. But I wanna say, wait, I'm trying. I really, I really am trying.
Well, and there were so many people that tried. I mean, you look at even just these recent protests at Portland State, like there's precedents for this of occupying a building. And there's been so much pro-clutching about it. And my office is the office that is, is, you know, removing all of the graffiti and putting Millar Library back together. And the guy who's doing it sits right behind me, you know, in my office. And like, nobody is like, I wouldn't say like mad at the protesters. I think that, you know, that's our job of what we do. Like, and Millar was up for renovation anyways. And so, and a lot of it's being paid for by insurance funds and.
Can you explain what happened there?
Yeah, absolutely. So in response to the Palestinian genocide being perpetrated by Israel right now, there were some, I mean, all across the nation, there's been encampments popping up on campuses. And Portland State was no exception to that. So it started in the park blocks in front of Millar Library. And then the Portland Police Bureau came and pushed them up onto the Portico, or like the, the front entrance of the Millar Library. And then I guess at some point, students had been able to hide in the bathrooms of Millar. And so they were able to open it up from the inside after hours. And then after that, the floodgates just kind of opened and protesters were in the Millar Library. And that was an interesting time, cause I live, I'm walking distance, I live a three minute walk from Millar Library. So my neighborhood kind of turned into a little protest zone. And then uh, they were in there for several days. I can't even remember at this point. And then Portland Police Bureau, you know, they infiltrated the library, cleared them all out. There were several people that were protesters that were able to escape. Um, I can't remember the exact number of people. I feel like they arrested like thirty people. And even that too was kind of an annoying statistic that there was like, let's say, one in three of the people that got arrested were students. And like, look, these are all these outside agitators and all of this. And it's like, well, a lot of people got away. And it's like, well, a lot of people got away. And my guess is that they probably prioritized the safety of the students that were in there. But we've just, we've learned so much and like us Gen Z, like growing up during the twenty twenty protests after George Floyd was murdered. Like, we saw the brutality of the police and I was living in Virginia at the time, in Richmond, former capital of the Confederacy. Virginia State Police came down on us hard. They, and they enjoy it, they really like it, you can tell. They like have smiles on their faces, they like, they like doing that. Yeah, and it's, it's irritating to see that for sure. But after they cleared the library, Portland Police Bureau stuck around and beat on faculty, staff, students for like hours. And then there was that one dude who like ran his car into the pro, like the protest. And then he like maced a couple of people and it's just like, I don't know, I.
It's, it's discouraging.
Yeah. Oh yeah, you were talking about, you know, I, I think you need to give yourself a little bit of grace with, with your generation. Because I mean, like, the Vietnam War protests, like, those weren't anything to turn your nose up at. And that, that did set precedence in that, like, it, it's not for a lack of trying. But like, the fascist system that we live in is so well-oiled and good. I, I mean, there's no violence like state violence. But if you or I do anything like that, if we're out there protesting, then it just opens up the floodgates for state violence.
I think this is a time for us to be a bit more subversive in how we protest then, don't you think?
So if, if, just without going into it, because, but the way that the Black Lives Matter movement was destroyed by Trump and the federal troops. I mean, no one's paying attention to the fact that almost all the violence was initiated by the state. And then, once you've uncapped it, then there's, then there's an element of this, of protesters. Not even a large element, who have either legitimate grievances or just pissed off in general or just high as a kite or whatever it is. And then, then they can say, oh, look.
Well, it becomes about so much more, like, yes, the focus was on Palestine, I think that's so important and still to bring like to what is continuing to happen. Day in and day out. I, I wanna be very clear and adamant about that, that it is still happening. But it, it was about so much more, it was the grievances with capitalism as a whole. And honestly, I, you could see like the literature that was out there in front of the library. And, and the whole atmosphere of it, it was so, there were, there were families out there, there were kids, they're, they were grilling food and like handing out food to people and, and there's literature, books, you know, people swapping and, and community, like legit, real community. And that was exactly what I remember. It was my first time seeing it here in Portland, but it was exactly what I saw during the George Floyd protests back in Richmond. And where they set it up is they recontextualized the Robert E. Lee statue, which, you know, Confederate general. He's, uh, you know, president, yeah, anyways, so they have this like, they used to have this hundred foot-ish tall like statue of Robert E. Lee on a horse. And can you just like imagine being, I, I just like tried to put my, myself in the headspace, like being a black person that lives in Richmond and like having to drive past that statue and just like, are you, like this country values my life like so little that they would erect like statue like this. And they're not even old, that was the thing with all the statues. They were like, ah, my history. And it was like, no, this was put up like by the daughters of the Confederacy in like nineteen ten. You know, it wasn't like this great historic monument. But the point of what I'm trying to get at is, uh, uh, it kind of, when there was like, uh, a, it was more like a block party. I guess is what I'm trying to get to. And, you know, it's in like the Ritz, it's called Monument Avenue in Richmond, it's like one of the ritziest parts of the city. And I think a lot of people, some people were like cool with it, they were fine, but it, it kind of went on for like a couple of weeks, you know? I think some of the homeowners were like, alright, let's, like, y'all gotta get out of here kind of thing. But never was it violent, never, it always got escalated by the police, always. It was always just chill and like, it was, it was fun and there was community. And then you have, you know, the cops come in and then it's all just, it's over. Cause they know that that, that kind of community is, is a spark.
Oh, I think you're so right.
And they know that that will spread so quick when people start seeing that, you know, I don't know.
So less angry protests and more picnic protests is what you're saying?
Yeah, for sure.
Fuck yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, even what they did, like, uh, taking the library, like, and people were still allowed in. It was the university that closed down the library and made it inaccessible. And Millar used to apparently be open to the public and it's now only, uh, accessible to students. And I mean, when I've gone in there, I've never seen more than like two dozen people in there. Like, when, during the, during the protest, yeah, that was like the most people I've seen there in the year of working at Portland State. So, yeah, anyways. I feel like I have a knack showing up in places when big historic moments happen.
Really?
Yeah. When I lived in DC, I lived less than a mile away from the Capitol Building on January sixth. But yeah, that was, that was kind of crazy to live so close to the Capitol Building when the insurrection happened.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah, I was watching the videos at work and I was just like, oh my god. And when I got home, I even rode the metro home with some people that obviously had like been in the, the Capitol Building. So, yeah, I, it was kind of astounding to see that. And just kind of, again, like talking about law enforcement in this country, like, there were a lot of people not on their A-game that day. There was a lot of people, like, law enforcement wise, like, how, how did they get in to the Capitol Building? I've, I've been to the Capitol Building many times, there, there's a lot. I, I can't even remember how many police forces operate out of DC, but it's like forty. If you like go and look at all of the, the police forces that have jurisdiction within the District of Columbia. And there was so much lead up to that insurrection. And it was easy, it was just like in the open, it was on like social media, like it was on this one called Parler. I don't know if you know this social media, but tends to skew very right on the people that use it. And yeah, so I was like somehow living in DC when that happened, you know, so that was kind of crazy. And then, yeah, again, being a PSU employee when this, this protest happened.
Yeah. I always, I always feel a little appreciative when I feel like I've been in something that, that we'll look back at.
Yeah. I think the history will look back on those protesters very fondly, I think.
Which ones are you talking about?
The, um, the Millar Library protesters. Not, I don't, I don't know about the insurrectionists in DC. I think that, I think a lot of them have been arrested at this point. I mean, a lot of them, and it just goes to show the difference between like, understanding of how our government works. Is that like, the people in Millar, like faces covered, you know, like they, like, so identity wasn't. And, and they, some of them like had like makeshift like shields that were made out of like, uh, what was it? Like trash cans or whatever and like duct tape and they have their goggles because the police will pepper spray you. Helmets, cause like, they have batons. And so we've learned a lot, like how to just exist and survive in this system. And a lot of those people were young, like, I was there when the protesters ran out of the building. And, yeah, it just, um, yeah, we've learned a lot. We, our generation, we've grown up in this like school shooter kind of like fascist police state. And so, if the word's subversive, we've learned how to be subversive and get creative in the ways that we protest.
Yeah, I know, um, Jerry alluded to technology pieces. And that was where I was so thankful for Gen Zers figuring that stuff out. Because I remember a story of one of Trump's rallies where there was some people who figured out, oh, they're just letting anybody sign up for a, a free ticket to go.
Oh, yeah.
And they got people online to do it. And here Trump's campaign thought, we've got a million people that wanna come to this thing. And totally fucked him over because.
Yeah.
I, and I love that kind of thing, that like being able to do something, yeah, it's subversive, doing something in solidarity that doesn't actually cause harm to anyone.
Yeah.
But makes the point.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, I think one of the things that makes me sad, we used to be able to mobilize twenty thousand people in Portland for anything, and we can't do that anymore. I mean, COVID, there's the whole COVID phenomenon of people hunkering down and not having un-hunkered. And then there's the increased reality of how police deal with these things, people are afraid.
Yeah.
In Mexico City, sixty-eight maybe, I don't know, um, two hundred and fifty-eight students were killed in a demonstration. Guess what? That broke the movement.
Yeah.
Because fear now was legitimate, that you could be mowed down at any minute. And that's, that's a deterrent to taking risks.
Yeah.
So, and I saw the, the same, same thing here with the federal troops and, and it's just like. I mean, one of the things just that's frustrating for me is, I'm very limited in my mobility, my balance is. Actually, not entirely mental, I'm, I can't drive anywhere, I don't have a car. I cannot get to places to engage and I have long COVID. So I'm extremely limited in what I can do and unlimited in what I wanna do.
Yeah, well, I think it's incumbent on us to create a society where everyone can kind of, you know, contribute in the way that they're able to. So, I mean, even just doing this, like, you're doing more than so many and this is really important.
Without this, I would be in deep, deep trouble with myself. I'm not nonviolent in these moments, I'm nonviolent, nonviolent, nonviolent. And then I see oppression and I, I wanna hurt them, I wanna hurt the perpetrators.
It requires having grace for people that probably don't have much or any for you. And that's incumbent on, that's, you know, that's what makes a leader is, sometimes I go to the city council meetings and whether I agree with their politics or not, a lot of those, all of the commissioners and Ted Wheeler, they, they take a lot of, a lot of punches, you know? And like, that's hard to just, and nor should you act like it doesn't affect you, because it does. And like, there's kind of a, a phrase, like, don't read the comments kind of thing. But I don't know, my curiosity gets the best of me and I, I do read them, cause I use people as a barometer, like, I wanna see what people are saying to be like. Oh, that, that person like really doesn't know me, that's off base, or like, wow, that, that's actually kind of true. Or I try to be like really honest with myself, for sure. But I think that, yeah, it takes, it takes some self-awareness to realize that the way that things are in this society, when you look at the inequality, it can pretty much always be traced to some sort of systemic racism. Like, every time the black folks in this country have had it, they were, you know, they're playing the game, they're a part of the capitalist system. They're creating businesses, they had something going, they, they build a community, they had a neighborhood, it's like, oh, let's build a freeway over this. Let's, you know, push people out of their homes, let's find a way to destroy their businesses. And, and a lot of times it was overtly just destroying and burning down black-owned businesses, like so many. Yeah, and we, and it, it goes beyond Tulsa, like, I definitely, and a lot of people don't even know about that, the burning of Black Wall Street. But like, it, it goes so much deeper, that's just like, luckily that one's kind of had a resurgence. But I don't remember learning about that in elementary school, I heard about that. Not even in college, like just through social media and people educating, so.
Well, I mean, there was the Harlem Renaissance. I mean, that whole period of cultural flourishing in Harlem. And I didn't, do not understand the specifics of how that eroded and Harlem became this sentence. If you're living in Harlem, you're sentenced to endure hard and difficult things. And now it's fucking gentrified.
Yeah.
Bedard Stuyvesant is gentrified. There should be a Geneva War Trib- Tribunal for Crimes Against Humanity by developers.
I think you might be on to something.
That one's a keeper.
Well, I mean, and it, it's just hoarding, hoarding wealth, it's more wealth than you could ever spend your entire life. Like, you can only live in one house at a time, like, why are there people in this nation, in this world that own hundreds of units, if not, you know, thousands, like, it's just, you're talking about unbelievable wealth that you couldn't spend in ten thousand lifetimes. And I, when I talk about like wealth redistribution or, we kind of talked a little bit about like what it means to be a socialist. It's like, you want an egalitarian society, you want equity. And we can't have that when there's like five hundred people in this world that are hoarding more wealth than you could even really imagine, you know? And they kind of, they just have so much control over your life. And the only way to counteract that is to be talking to people, gathering in community, building out a working class movement. And I think, I think that's, you know, a lot of what Bernie was talking about. And I know one thing we wanted to talk about is kind of, you know, some mentors in my life. And I, I really do look up to Bernie Sanders, I got to meet him back in DC.
You did.
Uh, he has been someone that, I feel like has our best interest in mind. And he's just like, he's authentic, I feel like he's been saying the same thing since he was young, there's so much evidence of that. And I very much, you know, I've read his books and he ran several times before he ever won. And so, I, I kind of look at that and I think it's a lot more important to build again, something organic and, and move through this in my own way. And I very much am someone that, like, I, I read a lot, but, and, and I listen to what other people say to me. But I really have to find things out on my own, I learn through, through doing, and I think that's a lot of people. But I think sometimes we're afraid to try things and I just had to try, you know? I had to throw my hat in the ring this time and I've learned so much. So I, I feel like I'm on a good track. Andrea's become probably my best friend in this race of, you don't, I don't know, you've kind of got to commiserate with other people that are, that are in it. Cause sometimes it's kind of hard and even lately, Andrea's kind of come under some scrutiny from some less than kind people. And some people have like said some stuff about me, but it's getting to the point that like, people, some of these things, like doxing people, like putting personal information out there, like, I, that's, that's dangerous. And, and targeting people and there are definitely folks in this race whose policies I do not agree with. But I will not stoop to that level.
If, and, and now that you have a family, you have to be a little more careful than when you were just you.
Yeah, for sure.
Right? Cause it's not just you and that.
I truly couldn't do it without a family, though, I, I always knew that was a huge part of it, that I needed to find my family unit. Cause you need that support, you know, you, you need people that know you well and that love you regardless of what people are saying. Because people are mean, can be mean, not always mean. But I, again, it's just like, when I see that, I just see a hurt person trying to hurt people. And like, I kind of, I, I don't know if it's mean to say that, like, almost pity them and like, I'm like, ah, what have you been through, you know? And like, I very much, I, I believe that, to be a good politician, like, you do it, you do it because you love people. Like, you genuinely wanna hear people's stories, like, you wanna know them, that's what a good politician, in my opinion, should be all about.
If only that was the case through and through, if only that was the type of politician. If only that was how people saw other people who they have opposing views from.
Yeah.
The world would be entirely different.
Definitely. And I, I do like that it's nonpartisan at the local level, I think we get really caught up in, in the labels, for sure. I, yeah, I don't know, I genuinely care about people, I want the best for them. And I hope that I can bring that to this race and continue to grow my campaign and grow, you know, greater sense of community. I think the thing that I've been even more interested in is this idea of like actually becoming a community organizer and what that means. Cause there, there's so many like environmental groups, different social activism groups in the city. And a lot of it is fragmented, you know, like people don't know each other. And it's, it's easier said than done, it's, I'm sure, I know I'm not the first person to be saying this and, and it takes work. But even just, you know, Andrea recommending me to come talk to y'all. And I had Andrea come out to that ITech Center that I was talking about earlier, to a salmon bake that they put on. And that was like super fun to have them come out to that. And just trying to find opportunities to include other candidates. And, and I put on a, a candidate's forum last weekend at Portland State and there was ten candidates. Um, it was, you know, it was. It was, you know, it was decent event. And that's the kinda stuff that I was wanting to do is just like, kinda. I guess, make opportunities for people to get their message out, but also for the public to. To be involved in the democratic process.
Yeah, I think that's really critical.
Can I, just before we, like, I know we're getting close to the end here, I just wanted to be sure that you got to say everything you wanted to say about the bipolar disorder.
Okay, yeah, I think it's really important for me to address the bipolar disorder. It, it, I kinda figured that it would come up in the campaign and, you know, this will not be the last time I run for something. So I didn't know when it would come up, but I figured it was better to just, full disclosure, get it out there. And, and it's kind of a central part of. Why I'm running. Like, I see, living downtown, I see people in crisis all the time. And I hear a lot of. These quick solutions of, let's just, you know, put them in jail or they'll, it'll all just get fixed or march them into a camp. And it's like, alright, well, if you met one person with mental illness, you've met one person. My story is. In twenty eighteen, I had a manic episode and it was predicated on, I, I had. Kinda got caught up in, in the bad, I guess, or inept medical system that we have right now. Is there weren't a lot of doctors in my college town. And so, I, we only had one psychiatrist at Virginia Tech. For like thirty thousand students. I guess insane. And, no pun intended. So I got referred into a, a community doctor. He was just a general practitioner. And he put me on Prozac. For depression, depressive symptoms, and then also Adderall. And both of those are really bad for people with bipolar. And I was not sleeping. I was over, I was studying Arabic and Middle Eastern studies in college in addition to the building construction, sustainability stuff. And I was over in Oman and I, I was not sleeping. And I kinda went off the rails a little bit. And I ended up in a mental hospital over there for fourteen days. And I had to get medically escorted. Back to the US after all of that. And then, you know, I, I had a whole summer where I was on the streets. I was not communicating with my family. Um, I was fortunately able to eventually get reconnected with them. But I spent a lot of time kinda just wandering in the way that I see a lot of people do in Portland. And I really feel for people that are struggling and like, tho- that's my focus, you know? It's like getting people roped back in to society and building out our, our social safety net in the sense of like. Making sure people are housed, that they have healthy food, that they have clean drinking water and clean air to breathe, that, you know. They have the healthcare that they need. And, and this is a big thing to come, like, to, you know, to tackle. But we absolutely can do it. And so, I, I definitely bring that lived experience and that perspective of. We have to be helping the most vulnerable in our society. And it will reap den- dividends. Like, we will truly. All be better for it if we are honing in and focusing on the most vulnerable and getting them what they need.
I believe that too. Absolutely. Wow. So you've been there. You've seen it. You've lived that.
Yeah, and like I said, I, I have a very privileged life. And luckily, my family had the resources to be able to help me. But that is not the story for so, so many people in this country. And it took so much to get back to good. It took two years to just. Get back to baseline and five years for my manic episode to feel like I was like thriving again or have my brain back at least. And, yeah, and reach that, like, some level of stability. Um, but yeah. I really feel for people. And I think we have a lot of interesting ideas floating around. I, I'm a fan of Portland Street Response. I, I would really like to see that expanded. I wish that Virginia had had something like that when I was going through my manic episode. Um, it's definitely, it's dangerous to involve someone with a gun when there's mental illness at play cuz you. And, and so few times is it really necessary to have someone with a gun. Like, I guess if there's, you know, there's an active shooter. Probably, I guess, might be an opportunity for that. But like, if someone's in crisis. I think there might be better ways and, and people more specially trained to, to be able to handle something like that. I put myself out there on Reddit in one of those Ask Me Anythings. And, uh, my, my website wasn't developed. Very well at that point. And I just kinda like wanted to put something out there and like, get some, even like the negative feedback. It's good. And you should learn something from it. And there was a couple of people that were like, I would never vote for you. Like, you're schizophrenic or like, you know. Like, how do we get rid of people like you or get you, like, why do you move to Portland? It's like, I mean, honestly, I did move here. There were so many reasons. But I felt like the mental healthcare was better. And I do feel like it's better. Uh, and I know that maybe that is frightening to some people that live here. But it's, it's, it's a bit better than, than where I came from. And I do feel like the conversations are different here. That people are a lot more open-minded in, in the starting place. There is a lot more empathy, compassion. And this stuff takes time. Like, getting people into treatments and like, I mean, there's also just, like, once you are on the streets. It's so hard to get back into housing. And I think, like, my wife sees it all the time at work. There's, there's a lot of kids. That, you know, live in on the streets and that, i- it's unacceptable. It can't happen. And they're, and we're all in agreement. On that, but it's like, how do you?
Shouldn't we all be in agreement on that?
Yeah.
Everybody wants to go to heaven, but nobody wants to die. We're all in agreement on this, except money. You expect us to invest money?
Yeah.
Hell, no.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, it's. It's, th- there's a, I use this image from time to time, this leader of the American Indian Movement when they occupied Alcatraz. Talked about two world wars, World War One, World War Two, and one generation. He said, a great psychotic Paul settled over the country. Well, all these men who'd been through war with no mental health services and no, I mean, holy shit. So we have this whole, and. So that's a little before my generation, but it certainly spills over. So we have all this denial. About the mental health needs of soldiers who've been through fucking hell.
Yeah.
So I ne- you know, I was always one, the firm ahead. I never got drafted. I was twenty six when I got back from Africa. And yet, I'm outraged at the total lack of willingness to address the effects. And, and now it's not just war. It's like, you, you don't have to go to war to be fucked up on drugs. You don't have to go to war. To be sort of militarized in how you think, that you can't actually function freely in the society when you come back.
Yeah.
You look at the rejection of the Vietnam vets, which was completely inappropriate, and the damage that did. So it's like, there's, there's a mental health need. And that was before covid.
Yeah.
So we could be investing ten times what we're investing in mental health and still might not be able to truly address the problem. But if we don't care about, let's just take the soldiers. I mean, I'd take everybody, but it's like. That's why I say everybody wants to go to heaven, but nobody wants to die. It's like, we've created this mess. There will be sacrifices needed to fix it.
Yeah.
And nobody wants to make, not nobody, but.
Yeah.
The idea of discomfort, I mean, we're just, yeah, we're.
Well, I think it goes, it just goes so much deeper than just, you know, meds and even, I mean, I see it as kind of. A lifestyle deal in the sense that being well-adjusted to a profoundly sick society is not exactly a mark of health. And how can, eh, I've seen so many statistics. If it's like, one in two people have a mental illness or maybe that's just for Gen Z. Or, you know, if you don't have one, then you know someone who doesn't. Like, how can so many people be having mental illness? And it's like, is our society created in a way that is conducive to how humans actually are meant to live? Because everything I've read about bipolar is adaptation for people that live like near the poles, that like in the winter. Eh, you kinda go into like a little of a hibernation. Like, it's not, I've only ever had the one manic episode. And honestly, I feel like it was. Pret- like, really caused by being put on the Prozac and the Adderall, which is like this human-made solution to this problem. And that kinda spun me. And then, cuz I never really had anything like that leading up to it. And then, I've always been more on like the depressive side. And in the wintertime, that just kinda looks like a mighty pint of Ben and Jerry's every now and again, play some video games and hang out with my family. And do some board games. It's like, we're supposed to rest in the winter. And that's what I kinda love about Portland, is I don't have to feel. Bad about resting in the winter because the weather is, you know, kinda dreary. And I kind of have come to love it. Like, in, in a weird way. I'm almost like, like, the summer's cool, but if the rain had stuck around, I don't think I would have minded.
I'm with you. I love that. I love the winter.
Yeah, it gives me the ability to rest. And I think that, we were talking about rest earlier. And I, you know, need to challenge myself to take more rest. But rest, like, take, take your time. But like, that's the thing is our system right now. How many people can afford to do that? And that's kinda the point, is that you're so overworked and underpaid that you're just barely keeping up. And you don't really have enough time to pay attention to the people that are actually pulling the strings on your life. So.
Or the time to spend with the people who care about us, which is the thing that staves off that mental health concern.
Yeah, exactly. Like, you go, you go to work to provide for your family who you never see, to pay for a house that you never live in. Never there. So, I think it, something, you know, that I would say to people, they're like, oh, why should someone? Why should I elect someone with bipolar disorder? I think I have a very unique perspective on our system. I think that I see it for what it is. And am able to kinda cut through some of the minutia of like, getting caught up in some of the more frivolous parts of. The capitalist system and kinda just calling it out for what it is. You know, I've kinda been, been to the bottom, seen, seen how it is. And I think that I would bring that lived experience to creating actual policy that, that would be long-lasting and effective.
That makes perfect sense to me. I fully believe in bringing people to positions of leadership that do understand. And see things, or can see things from that, like, slightly stepped outside.
Yeah.
No, I think. Outsiders always see things more clearly. Cuz I talk a lot about this image of, I'm not sure who discovered water, but I'm sure it wasn't a fish. If you're swimming in it, you can't say it, right?
I'm putting that one into my repertoire.
Good. And it's, everything is in the public domain. So for me, living in Africa for three years was getting outside. And then coming back with new eyes. And every, nothing has been the same, the same since then. So, that's why I think it's people who've had experiences. So you can have, have an abstract concept of mental illness. And bipolar, which probably bears almost no relationship to the actual condition. I'm doing, dealing with this, my wife died of dementia. And people have ideas about dementia that don't correspond at all to, to the reality.
Yeah.
So people who know those realities, whatever they are, are more trustworthy. Not because the other people are intentionally untrustworthy. But they literally don't know what they're talking about. They think they do, but they don't. So, I think we need to bring all of who we are. To the table. So for you to run, you really need to bring that part of who you are, or you're not really running. Some part of you is running.
And I think that experience of having the manic episode and the subsequent depression, it was so humbling. I think before that, you know, I. Had a super high caliber girlfriend. I was the student body president at Virginia Tech. I, you know, I was involved in everything. And I think there was a lot of ego wrapped up in that. And it was so humbling to kinda see it all unravel really quickly. And you realize, this stuff happens fast. Like, you could have it all together and you miss, you miss rent. And then you're on the street and you can't figure out a place to live. And you just, you fall into this, this despair. And then you're in contact with a lot. More substances. And you might turn to that to kinda ease a lot of the suffering. And like, I can't really. Blame you. I feel like if you don't really have hope, that's, you know, like, what is, you're just trying to make it through the day. Like, people that ask for money and there, there's folks that are like, oh, they're gonna spend it on drugs. Like, don't give them cash. And it's like. I mean, if drinking a beer is what got you through the day, like, I, I don't know, who am I to judge you? I, I have not, I don't know. Yeah, I think it's really important to have people. In those positions making laws that understand that. This lifestyle that we have is extremely fragile. And, you know, it can unravel at any time. So. And, and also just having like grace for people. We're not robots. We cannot do things perfectly. And allowing room for, for error, allowing room for, you know.
Now we're talking about compassion and empathy. Those are unfashionable words. They're almost subversive. They're so unfashionable.
Subversive.
So, but, and so I always go back, you know, it's, I saw that sign in, um, Alder Commons. Black Lives Matter, Women's Rights Are Human Rights. The last thing was kindness is everything. And I said, sixty years of activism and I'm reduced to understanding that without kindness, nothing else matters. If we're not treating each other well, there is, there is no hope. So, that's why we try to speak the truth to goodness. That's why we have this podcast. That's why how I lived my life and have for a very long time. Um, we live in a toxic, negative environment. People who do good things like, oh. Jeremy, you're doing a really good thing by taking the time and energy to put yourself into a position that's not always comfortable. To try to talk about the things that matter to you, to protect the things that you value. Thank you for doing that. For being part of this deeper conversation that's the beginning of everything. So.
Yeah, I think the last thing I'll say is that I want to be a role model for people that have mental illness. If there truly is that so many of us in Gen Z and younger have mental illnesses. I want people to know that you can do this and keep going. Cuz, I mean, I don't know. There's definitely been some times that I did not wanna be on this earth. And, you know, if you end it, then you know for sure. It won't get better. And if you stick around, it might not get better immediately. And a lot of times it doesn't, but, you know? Just keep sticking around for one more day, just to see, to see the wild stuff that just happens. And I don't know, you've.
And you end up with a beautiful wife and a beautiful child.
Yeah, I, it's crazy to look at my life and think about all the times that I thought about not wanting to be here. And. Yeah, I would, I would say stick around and just see, see how it all unfolds. You know, we need you. And.
And, and your voice is very important to people who have, are on the verge of giving up hope. I mean, I just say it over and over again, if you've been on the verge of not wanting to be alive on the planet. Then people who are on the verge of not wanting to be alive on the planet will trust you.
Yeah.
Because you know that, that it's not a failure on their part that they have this feeling, that it's systemic, that it's almost inevitable. Given the con game that's being played, played on us. So I just, I, I, I just feel like I really wanna support you in doing that. To just be, did the word authentic came, come up earlier somewhere in the conversation?
No, but it fits.
Who we are, we give, we share, I share who I am. Right now, there are a lot of limitations with that. But there also, there's a lot of experience. And a lot of love and a lot of care. And there's not nearly enough love and care in the world. So I can't go wrong. And I'm adding to that. And the, the same is true for you and your wife and your family. And for what we're trying to do. And I've been privileged to have the conversations. We are so blessed to have created. A forum for these conversations. So we're, I mean, speaking ice statements, I'm grateful, she's grateful. I don't need to use a nice statement. We're grateful.
I'm grateful too. This has been great. I really appreciate y'all.
Thank you so much for coming and sharing yourself and the stories that have led you to where you are. And, and that are inspiring you for where you're going. Super amazing. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And that's a wrap. Thank you for joining us on this episode of Speaking Truth to Goodness. It was a pleasure to have Jeremy Bosale Smith. Share his passionate and insightful perspectives on making Portland a better place for all its residents. Jeremy's commitment to mental health, renters' rights, and sustainable development are just a few of the areas where he hopes to make a significant impact. Are just a few of the areas where he hopes to make a significant impact, we covered a lot today, from the personal influences that shape his political views. To the practical aspects of his campaign, Jeremy's approach to integrating his life experiences with his professional skills in project management. Illustrates a holistic approach to governance that seeks to address systemic issues at their roots. We hope this discussion has inspired you to think more deeply about the role of personal experiences in shaping public service. Don't forget to engage with us by liking, commenting, and sharing this episode. Keep speaking truth to goodness, because goodness is all around.